Hola, buenos días a todos y a la gente de Guam. Hoy es miércoles, 19 de febrero de 2025. Esta audiencia pública será llevada a cabo por mí mismo, el senador William A. Parkinson. Esta audiencia pública se ha llamado a ordenar, y el tiempo es ahora 10:02. Para recordar y cumplir con la ley de gobierno abierta, este informe fue diseminado a todas las redes de medios locales el miércoles 12 de febrero de 2025, y también se compartió un segundo informe a todas las redes locales el lunes 17 de febrero de 2025. Este informe fue publicado y disponible en el sitio web de legisladores de Guam y el portal de notificación pública del gobierno de Guam. Tenemos un elemento en la agenda esta mañana, la resolución 7-38 COR. Ahora empezaremos a escuchar testimonios y discusiones sobre la resolución 7-38 COR, patrocinada por mí mismo, el senador William A. Parkinson, relativo a la obligación del gobierno federal de Estados Unidos a financiar plenamente la construcción y la mantenimiento de los cárceles de defensa aérea y otras infraestructuras de defensa civil en Guam, en la luz de las tensiones geopolíticas altas y la amenaza de los conflictos regionales. También me gustaría reconocer a mis colegas que nos han acompañado hoy. A mi derecha tengo al senador Guma Tao Tao, el secretario legislativo Sabrina Salas Mantenani y al senador Vince Borha. Gracias por estar aquí hoy. Antes de comenzar, voy a analizar algunas reglas generales para la conducción de esta audiencia. Cuando hablen, asegúrense de que el micrófono esté encendido y indiquen su nombre y título para los objetivos de conservación de la nota. Los miembros del panel se piden que permanezcan en el cuarto para preguntas o testimonio adicional como se les desee por parte de los miembros presentes. Las preguntas y testimonios serán confinados a la naturaleza sustancial de la agenda. El infracción personal a pesar de la característica o motivo de cualquier senador o de cualquier individuo testificando no es permitido. Individuals que fallan en cumplir estas reglas serán restriccionados a participar y serán escuchados y retirados del cuarto. Ahora procederemos a las discusiones sobre la resolución número 7-38 COR. Empecaré dando mis comentarios abiertos como principal patrocinador de esta resolución. La resolución 7-38 obliga al gobierno federal a financiar y construir cárceles aéreas y otras infraestructuras de defensa civil en Guam. Estamos en un momento pivotal de nuestra historia y no buscamos nada menos que el compromiso con la seguridad y la seguridad del pueblo de Guam a medio que escalan las tensiones geopolíticas y la rápida evolución de la guerra moderna. La protección de nuestro pueblo exige medidas proactivas y una colaboración sostenida entre el gobierno local y el gobierno federal. La ubicación de Guam en el Pacífico Indo nos coloca en el epicentro de la defensa estratégica de América, como hogar de instalaciones militares importantes de Estados Unidos, incluidas la base de la Fuerza Aérea de Anderson, la base naval y la inmediatamente completada de la base marina de China. Nuestra isla es el fulcro para la proyección de poder de Estados Unidos en el Pacífico, y esto viene con un riesgo indeniable. Guam ha sido un objetivo principal en los potenciales conflictos. El reporte anual del Departamento de Defensa de 2022 al Congreso confirmó que Guam se ubica geográficamente dentro del alcance directo de las capacidades de misiles más avanzadas de China. El misil DF-26 conocido como el asesino de Guam está especialmente diseñado para atacar nuestra isla, y China ha rápido ampliado su arsenal. Su stockpile de misiles ha triplicado desde 2020, y a partir de 2027, solo dos años después, Beijing se proyecta alcanzar la lista completa de la preparación de la guerra. Los juegos de guerra llevados a cabo por el Pentágono indican que si se produce un conflicto, Guam es un primer objetivo de ataque. Mientras el ejército estadounidense está haciendo inversiones en la defensa de misiles, la historia ha demostrado que ningún sistema es seguro. Las defensas aéreas modernas, no importa cuán sofisticadas, no pueden interceptar cada misil en un ataque suficiente de saturación. Por eso la defensa civil no puede permanecer como una pensión posterior. Durante décadas, el gobierno estadounidense ha construido instalaciones endurecidas para proteger los activos militares, sin embargo, los civiles permanecen indefensos. En los años 60, durante la Guerra Fría, el gobierno federal de Estados Unidos gastó 1,7 mil millones en los cárceles de rescate para los civiles. Pero hoy, los cárceles más significativos construidos por Estados Unidos son para la continuidad de las operaciones gubernamentales, no para la seguridad pública. Mientras tanto, otras naciones enfrentando amenazas similares están activamente preparándose. Japón, Corea del Sur y Taiwán tienen redes de cárceles subterráneas extensas, y Japón realizó recientemente drills de evacuación juntos Estados Unidos-Japón para los civiles que viven cerca de Taiwán. Sin embargo, Guam no tiene uno. El ejército estadounidense está preparando para luchar por Guam, sin embargo, nuestra población civil queda sin ningún plan realista para la protección. La resolución también llama a la infraestructura médica respaldada federalmente, reconociendo la limitada capacidad de Guam para responder a un evento de muerte masiva. Si un ataque de misiles o un ataque ciberio que degradara nuestros hospitales, el propio ejército también enfrentaría una crisis operacional. Sin capacidad adecuada de hospitales o instalaciones endurecidas, miles podrían sufrir muertes inevitablemente. Estados Unidos actualmente está invirtiendo en un sistema de defensa aérea de 360 grados para Guam, pero ese proyecto está al menos década de cumplir. El alcance planificado del sistema ya había sido reducido de 22 a 16 habitaciones, y el financiamiento adicional podría ser incertacho. Simplemente dicho, la defensa de misiles no es suficiente. La gente me ha dicho: "En caso de un misil nuclear, estos cárceles aéreos serán inútiles." Pero digo, la guerra nuclear es una situación terminal para todos, y la guerra moderna está evolucionando, y Guam debe prepararse para los ataques impulsados por la IA y con la ayuda de ciber. China ha invertido fuertemente en la tecnología de drones de poder AI, con AI involucrado en la reconocimiento, ataque, toma de decisiones y ejecución de un ataque que podría ser utilizado en un escenario de invasión de Taiwán. Atacos ciberáticos en la infraestructura crítica de Guam, redes eléctricas, hospitales y redes de comunicación son una amenaza real y creciente. Reconociendo la multifacetedad de la naturaleza de los amenazas modernas, Guam ha involucrado proactivamente en la fortalecimiento de su seguridad ciberática. En noviembre de 2023, la Guardia Nacional del Ejército de Guam de Guam organizó el sumo de seguridad ciberseguridad central del Pacífico del Norte en la Universidad de Guam. Este sumo convenció a más de 100 partes interesadas en la seguridad ciberática,
During implementation of new systems. Adding shelter facilities would further strain these resources through additional security personnel requirements, increased maintenance and supply chain demands, new training requirements for emergency staff, and complex logistics for shelter activation and population movement. Additional communication system requirements, expanded medical support needs, and greater demand on utilities and basic services. Before proceeding, we need to carefully examine how these proposed shelters would complement or potentially conflict with existing shelter in place protocols, impact our current emergency resource allocation, affect our ability to maintain existing emergency response capabilities, and to integrate with our current emergency communication systems. Additionally, as noted in the EIA MD report, any new emergency management initiatives require establishment of integrated command structures, development of unified communication protocols, creation of standardized response procedures, implementation of robust training programs, deployment of multi-layered security protocols, and enhanced cybersecurity measures for new facilities. The resolution's goals merit serious consideration, but I strongly encourage the legislature to seek answers to these fundamental questions before proceeding. We must ensure any new civil defense infrastructure enhances rather than complicates our existing emergency response capabilities, which have been carefully developed and refined over many years. I value being able to offer these insights and remain available to answer any questions the committee may regard having these matters. Respectfully submitted, Esther J.C. Agueki, Homeland Security Advisor. And there is just one other I'd like to read into the record from testimony of Ginger Cruz, policy advocate. "Off day Senator Parkinson, Honorable Senators of the Guam Legislature, thank you for the opportunity to testify on Resolution 7-38 urging the federal government to fully fund the construction and maintenance of civil defense shelters. This isn't just policy, it's about survival. I commend you for addressing this vital issue that affects the security and well-being of Guam's people, and I appreciate this chance to contribute insights for your consideration." Guam is not just a dot on the map, and we are not just talking about hypotheticals. We are 170,000 people with history, culture, land, and sea that happen to just be the frontline territory and one of the most precarious geopolitical hotspots on the planet. With adversaries building arsenals that could turn Guam from a tropical paradise into a war zone. The question is not if we are a target, the question is what are we doing to protect our people? Our A and D estimates the probability of nuclear war this century at anywhere from negligible to over 80%. Even if you take the low end, the chance is not zero. And Guam, we're not just in the blast radius, we're front row and center. China has tripled its missile inventory since 2020, boasting 3,500 warheads and the launchers to fire them. By 2027, just two years away, Beijing is expected to reach full war readiness, and they are building up their nuclear arsenal with a target reaching parity with the U.S. and Russia within the next 10 years. North Korea, their growing missile alliance with Russia is making them more dangerous by the day. Conflict breaks out, Guam is a prime target. War games run by the Pentagon had confirmed this repeatedly, the DF-26 missile from China, chillingly nicknamed the Guam Killer, is designed specifically to strike us. The DF-27 hypersonic upgrade will be even harder to intercept. This means we could have as little as 10 minutes to react. 10 minutes, long enough to know what's coming, but not long enough to do anything about it unless we're prepared. If we are struck with conventional warheads, destruction would be concentrated at impact points, likely leveling everything within half a mile. Fortified, easily accessible shelters could make a real difference for those on the perimeter, but only if people got to them in time. If hit with a nuclear warhead, the devastation would be far worse, wiping everything out from the impact zone up to half the island or more. Radiation fallout would require extended sheltering with food, water, power, ventilation, and medical supplies until radiation had degraded and outside help could arrive. Current planning paradigms say Guam would need 5 to 20 square feet per person in shelters scattered throughout population centers, within a few minutes where people work and where people live. The best protection? Full-scale underground shelters with ventilation and power. Reinforced interior rooms in existing buildings, no windows, thick walls. Each barrier, a foot of earth protection, reducing exposure to 1/30. If you have three feet, you could reduce exposure to 1/1,000. But the challenge is the cost and the trade-offs. Missile defense alone is not enough. In a time of government cost-cutting and competing priorities, the most effective use of federal dollars to Guam civilian population is the 360-degree missile defense system. Stopping missiles before they reach us provides the highest level of security. Full funding and rapid implementation of the system should be priority one. But let's be clear, no system is foolproof. Ask Ukraine, ask Israel, despite the latest technologies, some missiles are going to get through. Which brings us to the question of civil defense shelters. The 360-degree missile defense system is still essentially in the planning phases, at least a decade away from completion, with a total cost of $10 billion. Initial funding has barely trickled in, $1.5 billion in FY 2024, with another $1.8 billion anticipated for FY 2025. And already, we're seeing site reductions from 22 to 16, with discussions of potentially more cuts to come. This gives us a good indication about Washington's willingness to invest in Guam's protection. And keep in mind, as part of the DOD budget, the focus is on military personnel and assets while at the same time protecting civilians. Budgeting for actual civilian defense is still an afterthought. If we're looking for a country that's done civilian protection right, look to Switzerland. Since the Cold War in the 1960s, they've maintained enough shelters for their entire population, and they are the only country that can say that. But even they have let their network fall into dust repair. Around the same time in the 60s, the U.S. also made an effort, spending $1.7 billion on fallout shelters, repurposing basements and parking garages. Those old faded signs with the circle and the three inverted yellow triangles, they're relics of a time when the federal government made the attempt to prioritize civilian defense for fear of Soviet attack, and this animated federal actions. Instructions were handed out to families across the mainland, telling them how to reinforce space in homes and what supplies to have on hand. Drills were held in classrooms. Fast forward to today, and the most significant shelters built by the federal government are only for high-level officials for continuity of government. This has led to a rise in the number of so-called preppers. It's estimated that over 5% of the mainland population has planned for some type of shelter in their homes with provisions to shelter them for 30 days off the grid. There has also been a rise in luxurious survival condos and doomsday bunkers constructed by private companies that in one case, for a cool $300 million, can house 625 people in style. Japan, facing similar threats from China and North Korea, are revisiting shelter infrastructure in response to Russia's aggression in Ukraine. But the debate always boils down to the same question. Do you spend the money on missile defense? Or do you have sufficient resources to also build shelter for when defense fails? The global lesson? Nations that prioritize shelters ensure their people have a fighting chance. Now let's do a reality check. Building bomb shelters from scratch is expensive, time-consuming, and very, very hard to sustain. In order to protect 170,000 people spread out over 212 square miles, we would need multiple sites constructed, including land acquisition, equipment, construction, and maintenance. This would require billions in funds. It's unlikely the federal government will hand over these billions just for Guam to dig bunkers, especially on top of billions allocated to missile defense. But that does not mean we do nothing. We need a pragmatic approach. So let's start with what we have. Ask the federal government to conduct an immediate study to identify existing buildings that could have sections reinforced for shelters. Guam is already built to withstand typhoons and earthquakes. We have an advantage. Most of our homes, our buildings, are reinforced concrete. Underground garages, concrete government buildings, commercial basements, reinforcing a room in homes, let's be smart about this. Stockpile the essentials. Secure funding for 60 to 90 days of emergency food, water, and medical supplies, and work with island residents on maintaining reasonable stockpiles. After an attack, it will take time for help to get here, and we need to sustain our civilian population until it does, for any type of emergency. Invest in dual-use facilities. Instead of asking for bomb shelters, consider asking for community centers, gyms, hospitals, warehouses, and the like that could be billed to serve a purpose in peacetime and double as shelters in emergencies. These investments are easier to sell politically and practically. Norway does this. It allows us to get use out of constructed facilities now while also providing peace of mind for the unthinkable. And public information. We absolutely have to work with the federal government to better disseminate information that will provide island residents with information on what to prepare for in the unlikely event that the worst happens. Any new construction on islands should at least consider space for emergency shelter use, and Guam residents should be aware of what to do in case of emergency and what minimum supplies to have on hand. Even better, if we all had a blueprint to make a section of existing homes and businesses into shelters with federal financial support to get it done. This isn't just about war, it's about resilience. I believe we could refine our request to seek funding for solutions that will be taken seriously from the above four points. I would also recommend the following technical considerations. Use current terms. Air raid shelters is outdated. The modern terminologies is civil defense shelters, CBRN shelters, chemical, biological, radiological, nuclear, and fallout shelters. In our case, civil defense shelters would wrap it all up into one. Align the resolution's tone. Conveying pride in our history and tradition of robust military service without leaning on past injustices or lecturing Uncle Sam strengthens our case. Clarify federal roles. Congress authorizes multi-year funding while the executive branch engages in studies and planning. Keep the ask clear for each branch of government. And my final thoughts is preparedness is power. Here are three resources every policymaker and every Guam resident could benefit from reading. R E M M, Radiation Emergency Medical Management. FEMA, 72-hour Nuclear Detonation Response Guide. I F R C Nuclear, Radiological Emergency Guide. Guam is at risk, the time is now. Submitted with respect, Ginger Cruz, Policy Advocate, CEO, Manson International. At this time, I would like to open up the floor to questions from my colleagues, starting with Legislative Secretary Sabrina Solis-Mantinani. The floor is yours, ma'am. No time limit, speak as much as you want. This is a very heavy topic, and we shouldn't be constrained by time. Please ask away, be as thorough as you feel you need to be.
Thank you, Senator Parkinson, for introducing this resolution and bringing this conversation forward. I remember a time when my son was in middle school, and in the news, there were all these stories about the threats from North Korea, and we had to actually prepare a kit for my son. We had to put bottled water, masks, all sorts of things for him to be, I guess, safe, even though, you know, I don't know if that was really enough, because like Ginger provided in her testimony, what are you going to do if we have a nuclear, you know, bomb come to Guam? My son is not necessarily going to be safe with bottled water in a box. But having said that, thank you, Leland, for coming here today. So we're talking about the federal government providing funding for Guam. Leland, are you aware of any plans or anything that the local government is contributing in terms of preparedness, preparation?
I think, you know, the testimony that was presented by Homeland Security makes pretty clear they have a shelter in place policy, and they're not really looking for additional funds.
I see.
I think that speaks for itself.
What about, when we toured Public Health, the Mingilau facility, do you have any information about it being designated as a fallout shelter?
I have no information about that.
Were you aware?
No. I mean, it's got no windows, so, you know.
Yeah, okay.
It's got potential.
Thank you, Senator. At this time, I would like to recognize Senator, oh, I apologize. I'd also like to recognize my colleague Senator Christopher Barnett. Thank you for being here today, sir. And also, I just wanted to mention before I moved on that there is testimony by Charles Estvez, the Administrator, Office of Civil Defense, attached to the committee report with this that will be available for perusal, that my colleagues all have a copy. But at this time, I'd like to open the floor to Senator Sean Gumatautau, who is, I believe, also the Public Safety Chair, for any questions he may have.
Thank you, Senator, and thank you, Leland, for being with us today to offer up your testimony on this resolution. As the committee chair on emergency management, I was here to listen. And as you said earlier, and I believe it was also the senator, to listen to experts to help us to help make good decisions for public policy for Guam. And I think throughout this, I think that's what I'm going to do, is continue to listen and help find solutions that can help us, especially with this important issue. So thank you very much, Senator, and thank you, Leland, for being here today.
All right, and now I'd like to open the floor to questions for Senator Barnett.
Sido Smasi, Senator Parkinson, and thank you for conducting this hearing and the opportunity to ask questions and discuss without a time limit. It's very refreshing, thank you. I'm kind of shocked, honestly, because the testimony that we got from Esther Agueki, I feel like she should be answering these questions, not asking them. I mean, as the former head of Public Safety, I attended a forum at the University of Guam, and I think, Leland, you were in that forum as well. And it was on my left and my right, it had all the high-ranking admirals and their representatives, and this question actually came up a couple of years ago. What about the air raid shelters, or whatever, you know, terminology we're using, civil defense shelters? What about those? What about drills? You know, I remember in the 50s and the Cold War, there was always that duck-and-cover thing that, you know, students in the States, and I believe even here in Guam, did. My kids attend a fallout shelter at DL Perez Elementary School, and that's where the Public Health of Mingilau, there were a bunch of buildings built during this time, and as you guys may or may not remember, the Cold War. And these buildings were built similar to what Ginger Cruz's testimony has. They were built, but they were also built with the intention that they could be dual-use facilities, fallout shelters. So when I go to my kid's school at DL Perez Elementary and I walk by the cafeteria, there's actually the radioactive symbol on the wall that designates that site as a fallout shelter. But honestly, I just kind of believe that status quo is basically what we're getting from Esther Agueki. Again, when this question was asked in the forum, the answer that was given by the high-ranking brass was that's a local government problem, which I think really flies in the face. We had a briefing with the adjutant general Cruz, and he said, he told all the senators present that he felt like the federal government had a moral obligation to not just defend Guam, but to also provide, you know, shelters. And so we are way behind the curve on this, but so I'm very grateful, Senator Parkinson, that you're kind of lodging this on the official record. But, you know, when the brass says it's a local government problem, and we see little to no action other than, hey, just whatever you do for the typhoon, just do the same thing. I mean, that can't be, that cannot be the answer. But, you know. Also constructing shelters that are going to cost billions and billions of dollars, I mean, how are our Republican colleagues going to get that by Elon Musk? I mean, does he even know what a Guam is? You know what I mean? So I think what, for me, is really highlighted is we have a governor who has been criticized as being a naval governor, which is a throwback to the time when the U.S. military appointed our leaders for us. And people make that criticism because it's obvious that the governor enjoys a very close relationship with the Department of Defense, which is all fine and good, right? We fly under the U.S. flag. But I think for most people, they feel like the governor is not sticking up for the local people when she's sitting at these tables with the admirals, you know, Mosqueta, and say, hey, what about the local people? Can we do something for them? Can we get some, you know, funding to construct shelters? I've never heard that conversation. And when you have Esther Agueki basically investigating the legislature, like, oh, you want to do these plans? Well, did you know that we have to do this and we have to do that? Well, actually, I want to flip it, and I wish they were present so that we could ask these questions. Because this is not reassuring at all, that the people in charge of our homeland security and our civil defense kind of seem either clueless or that they're going to drag their heels and just prevent any effort from doing this. And I hope it's not because they're embarrassed that our local government is going to go to the federal government with our hat in our hand and say, hey, you know, what about us? And I also don't think that the solution should be, as Mrs. Cruz puts it, to construct a missile defense system as quickly as we can, without question. I think, you know, the work that you guys are doing at PCIS and a lot of just readily available articles on this defense system show that there are a lot of issues with it. And, you know, if this is, we're putting all our eggs in this missile defense basket, and the reality is, as Mrs. Cruz says, that, you know, there are going to be missiles that come through and hit Guam. I think that's a reality that our people aren't prepared for, because frankly, our government seems to be in denial about this issue. Or there just seems to be such a big issue that they don't even want to deal with it, and they'd rather fight it by, you know, posing all these questions. And really, I mean, this is something that they should have posed and addressed and answered and brought to the committee and said, this is how we're going to do these civil defense plans. Because, while I agree, the federal government not just has a moral, I don't think they just have a moral obligation, I think they have an obligation, period. Absolutely, they have a responsibility to protect the people of Guam, without a doubt, unequivocally. But I don't know if it's like the governor and her cabinet are just scared to assert themselves, because that's what I really think we need to do here. We need to assert ourselves and to make these demands for our people. I mean, it's kind of a, it's kind of a no-brainer. So, you know, I understand the enormity of what we're undertaking here, but, you know, being so far behind the curve, I also don't want to let the governor and our government off the hook, because it's very clear that they've done little to no preparation. And we've been talking about this since, you know, I was, I first became a senator. Where are the drills? Where are the jingles? Where is the public information campaign? Where are all these things that our people are going to have to be prepared for? And I think when we start doing these things, people are going to realize exactly the type of threat, the very real threat we're under. Because right now, it's headlines, and it's, you know, Senator Parkinson doing a resolution. But the minute you have the people of Guam leaving their workplace to go shelter someplace, the minute you have us actually accepting the reality and the cost of security, I think that's when we're going to really have people more in tune to having this conversation. Because right now, it's a little bit out of sight, out of mind. Like I said, you read about these things in the paper, you read about the Guam Killer, you read about the civilian military coordinating task force, you read about all these meetings and all these sit downs and all these photo ops that our government has with these high-ranking DOD officials. But I just feel like the people of Guam, like the real people of Guam, are absolutely not part of this conversation, and we definitely need to be. And it's a damn shame, really, that these conversations aren't being discussed at tables, you know, much higher than our pay grade. And so I'm not even sure if I have any questions, Leland. I don't know if you're in a position to answer for the administration, but, I mean, I guess, go ahead, just your thoughts on the little to no action. Because obviously, I feel strongly the federal government has a responsibility, but at the same time, I'm of the belief that our local government also has to move in a direction that, you know, we're absolutely standing still on.
So I think the important thing to note is that when we hear the military talk about defense, they're really talking about defense of their installations. And that's completely separate from defense of the community. Of course, you know, they're U.S. military, so they're going to say, we're here to protect Guam. But really, the defense issues are about defense of their assets. The second part of that is that, you know, there are two really important studies that I mentioned that came out, one in December and one in January, which make it very clear, even with hardened shelters for air defenses, even with air defenses around the range of air bases from Tinian to Palau, these bases are not going to be safe. And that's a well-known, I mean, this is understood. That means that bases throughout the region are going to be closed. And so if you start thinking about the impact on the, by the way, when I say bases and airfields, including our civilian airfield, because that's a dual-use facility in the event of a conflict. So basically, Guam would be cut off from the world for an extended period of time, in addition to any damages that might be done during the conflict. So these are things which are simply not being planned for. So, these are things which are simply not being planned for today. The military thinks in terms of what their responsibilities are, and that is their job. But the gap between what the military's doing, what's required for the civilian population is tremendous. And, you know, they're, to my knowledge, and again, this is the very first policy piece that I'm aware of that even addresses Guam's civilian community in terms of potential conflict issues. So, you know, no one's asking the federal government, there hasn't been a request for a study, to my knowledge. So, you know, this is a wide-open field, but it's also one in which the people of Guam to date are pretty much hung out.
Yeah, I agree. It's wide open, and it's really unfortunate that we haven't had any headway into this issue. And we are, you know, we're knee-deep in the Chinese kimchi, for lack of a better term. You know, the threat is very real. So, yeah, other than not having the, I mean, I really wish, Senator Parkinson, we could have had the officials from Homeland Security, Civil Defense, and, you know, I mean, it's ironic that they send all these questions to us, and then they say they remain available to answer any questions low tide yet. So, okay. Well, thank you again, Senator Parkinson, and I commend you for this resolution, simply because I feel like we're engaging this issue on the official legislative record for, I mean, we've discussed it in hearings and stuff, but, you know, for the first time, really. So, thank you. And thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Senator Barnett. I do have a few questions. So, the Guam defense system is designed to provide persistent 360-degree layered and integrated air and missile defense. Given the complexity of integrating both new and existing systems, how confident is the Department of Defense in its ability to defend against simultaneous cruise, ballistic, and hypersonic threats?
Well, I mean, you'd have to ask them, but I, you know, I've, I've read through all the reports that I think are available publicly, and it's pretty clear that what they're proposing is aspirational, and it's a long way off. So, let me give you a very clear example on the hypersonic piece, I think, which the Currently, the plans for the missile defense system, and this is, this is in the Director of Operations Testing and Evaluation Report that came out just last month. The Missile Defense Agency has canceled its testing programs, which would be set up to evaluate in modeling and simulation how to manage a hypersonic threat. So, even though, you know, MDA says that hypersonic threats are on the board for the planning for the defense of Guam system, in fact, the MDA has canceled the modeling and simulation tests necessary to evaluate it. So, you know, it's, this is a, again, it's a very aspirational system. It's never been done. The Director of the Office of Testing and Evaluation has made it very clear that, you know, this is going to be a very significant challenge to pull off, if at all possible.
So, this is largely an aspirational goal, and you don't, you don't just, you don't think they'll be able to achieve all of it in a timely manner?
So, if, again, back to the question of what a military commander does. If you have responsibility for a base, you're going to throw everything you can at trying to defend it. Because you're going to try things that haven't been tried before, and that's really where we are.
The 2024 Annual Report states that the current test strategies for Guam's missile defense system need significant further development to achieve adequacy. Do you know what specific areas need improvement and what their steps are being taken to address that?
So, no, specifically, I don't, but I can give you some highlights. First of all, what we got in the 24 report was the unclassified version. The classified version, obviously, I have not seen. I'm sure some of those issues were laid out. And there are indications around the edges of public comments where we get some ideas. But let me give you just one example. The report very specifically talks about the way missile testing is conducted. So, most missile tests are done through modeling and simulation, because missile tests are very expensive to conduct. We had one here in December, where Standard Missile 3 was sent up to intercept a missile that was dropped out of the back of an airplane. The, this 2024 report makes it clear that this kind of test is exactly the wrong kind of test for real-world situations, because it was staged. Everyone knew where the missile was coming from, they knew effectively the day it was going to happen. So, it was not a real-world test. And this is one of the most simple missiles that could be fired. So, one of the common critiques of the way that this testing is done is that they're not usually done for multiple warheads, they're not usually done for decoy targets. So, when missile defense does actual live tests, they do really the simplest test and claim that it's a victory that see it works, as opposed to what real-world situation would look like. And of course, you know, we are way behind the curve in terms of any sort of defense against some of the most advanced missile technology that exist, particularly the hypersonic missiles.
Is there any plans in place by the Missile Defense Agency to validate the system's effectiveness against more realistic attack scenarios?
I, I have no idea. I mean, missile defense does not connect that, conduct that many real-life missile tests. Most of this is done in modeling and simulation, and the DOT and E's report makes it clear even those modeling and simulation exercises are inadequate.
The report also highlighted that the missile defense system has extensive cyber attack surface and has not been rigorously tested in operationally realistic settings. What measures are in place to ensure Guam's missile defense can withstand cyber attacks?
I mean, you'd have to talk to the MDA about that, but if that's an area that is being flagged as inadequate, then that's clearly a serious concern, given all the cyber issues that Guam has seen in recent, in recent years. I should, I should note, there's something else that's out there, and I think we have to look at, you know, the humor that people have in Washington around acronyms. We saw last year in the Senate, when, and their criticism, and their, the committee report criticism, or call for more, more evaluation of the system, they called the system "the Integrated Air Missile Defense of Guam," and they used the acronym I.A.M. DOG. That acronym worked its way into this year's DOT and E report as well. So, I think, you know, in the background, we're seeing a lot of skepticism about what the system really can do.
That's, that's very chilling. When I think about my job as a senator, there's only really one thing that keeps me up at night. You know, all of the stuff with the budgets and the local challenges, those things, those things are important and they matter, and they're problems that we're going to be working towards every day to fix. But the stuff with the instability in the region, it really keeps me up at night. And that's why I introduced this as a resolution. I had introduced, I had considered introducing this initially as a bill. You know, I was thinking about some way we could maybe do tax credits or something to fund local air raid shelters. And, but I, and I thought about long and hard all of last term, because this is something I'd want to do last term, and I just saw that a bill was a vehicle that fell short of what I really wanted to discuss about this topic. Because, you know, like, while the title of the bill says this is about air raid shelters and civilian defense, this, this resolution is really about us as a community finally having this conversation in public, openly acknowledging that this terrifying existential threat in the region is something that we have to give real thought and real consideration to.
Senator, could I just say something? I, you know, we've talked to a lot of people, and I don't think, I think even if you talk to the Taiwanese, I don't think they expect to be invaded in 2027. And I don't, I don't think that, you know, on the board games, war is imminent. But what I do think is happening is that, you know, we're pushing closer and closer to this, in this contest that raises the stakes. And we see the stakes being raised by things like this proposed 360-degree missile defense system. And so, if those stakes are being raised on the military side, you know, whether conflict is imminent, or it's somewhere in the future, or never occurs, there should also be preparations for the civilian community. If they're preparing for conflict, to leave the civilians out of that equation is just not responsible.
Absolutely. No, I, I really appreciate that. And 2027 is not that far away, and I really hope your statement that Taiwan will not be invaded in 2027 is not one of those statements that ages like milk in history. Because I do sense that there is a real lack of urgency in our own community to really even address that this is something that we need to take seriously. I feel like, as a community, we're all kind of whisper, whistling down a dark elevator. And this is not to say that we need to panic, and the sky is falling, and our hair is on fire, but it is to say that this is something that we need to do serious consideration I hear the commentary that the United States has a moral obligation to do right by the people of Guam. And I wholeheartedly agree with that sentiment. But I was taught a long time ago in negotiations that you never rely on sentiment and the other side doing the right thing. You always appeal to their best self-interest and mutual benefit. So, Guam, they need to know and truly understand what their value proposition is to the United States, in a, on the military sense. In the military sense, we are a premier strategic point in this Pacific. So strategically important, all of our geopolitical foes have Guam first in mind when they think about ways to expand their influence in the Pacific region. Guam has a population that is also deeply patriotic, that loves America and serves their country at higher rates than in the national US mainland. These are valuable things that we can offer the US government when they need to ask themselves why they should invest billions in Guam. Because we are damn important to their strategic needs, and our people are brave patriots. And if that is not strategic incentive for the United States to invest in Guam, then I don't know what will get them to invest in Guam. But I've seen the stories of what it looks like when the US is a truly engaged and committed partners. We see military exercises, civilian drills, giving of aid. Could you imagine if Guam was treated with the same importance strategically as we treated Israel, with the same kind of infrastructure, investments? We are one of the most important locations on the earth strategically in the Pacific region, and it does not feel like it from the level of commitment we receive from the US government. We have something to offer the world besides our lovely beaches and our wonderful culture. We have tradeways and ocean paths that will control the destiny of the Pacific region. There are whispers of potential statehood for Guam because of the enormity of our importance in Washington, DC. So, this highlights how important this subject is, and I urge the people of Guam to understand that this can no longer be out of sight and out of mind, that how quickly problems that are coming tomorrow become the problems that are here now. 2027 is not that far away, and if I am, if I'm being honest with the people of Guam, I feel that for many people who sit on this panel today, it is entirely a possibility that we will see conflict in the Pacific during our time of service. And how we rise to that moment and to that occasion will not just define ourselves, but define the destiny of our island for potentially generations to come. So, I urge us to think deeply about this issue, think deeply about where we are going to allocate our resources, what allocation of resources are we going to do? How are we going to use our diplomatic and political capital to get true buy-in and commitment from the US government and have them treat us as the priority that they say we are? Thank you so much for my colleagues for coming here today. If there are no further questions or comments, this concludes our discussion on Resolution My office will continue to accept written testimony on today's hearing within five business days from today. Written testimony could be mailed to my office at 238 Archbishop Flores Street, Suite 905 of the DNA Building in Hagatia. You may also send your written testimony to my office via email at senatorsparkinson@guamlegislature.gov. Thank you all, truly, for your participation. This hearing on Resolution 7-38COR has now concluded, and the time is now 11:09.